We have a huge agenda today, but we're going to need someone's motion in a second to adopt our agenda.
Motion to-
Let's go ahead. Motion by Cindy?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Laura. All right, so we have a motion by Cindy, a second by Laura, all in favor of adopting our agenda, please say aye.
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 That motion passes. Before we get going, I forgot to take a roll call, so let me go through that real quick. Laura Blackwell, you're on the call.
I'm here.
Cindy Firdball, you're on.
I'm here.
Holly Grimsley, you're on.
Here.
Carolyn Carpenter? Carolyn, are you muted? Got unmuted, say hello.
I'm here.
All right, Carolyn. David Harrison?
Present, sir.
Barry Schumaker?
I'm here.
And myself, Rob Walter, that's all seven board members are here. Superintendent Chris Lauter, you on?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Emily, our teacher liaison, are you on?
I'm here.
Fantastic. And then Brian Shaw, Board Attorney, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we have 27 attendees currently as it shows on the team meeting. All right, so let's move on to Section Five. And here we have a call for approval of the September 14th Personnel Recommendations, and we just discussed those in closed session, so I'll need a motion in a second to approve our personnel recommendations.
So moved.
Okay, I think I heard David made the motion, second was Laura?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, motion by David, second by Laura. All in favor of approving the personnel recommendations that were presented in closed sessions, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes. And our second one for closed session was the approval of the closed session minutes from last month, and there was a minor correction to that, that's been made. I'll need a motion in a second to approve those, and if they need to remain confidential, please say so.
Keep the minutes confidential in the motion to approve.
Cindy's made the motion to approve the minutes from last month and keeping them confidential. David, were you second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, David was the second. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion passes, and we're moving on to our next section, which is recognitions. And we have 6.01, which is Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. Ms. Glenda Jones, are you on with us? Glenda? Shall we give her one more second for that? If not, we'll go on to 6.02, maybe we'll come back to 6.01. So 6.02 was the Impact Through Education Awards. Ms. Ronnie Boone, are you on with us?
I'm here.
Can you go through those for us, please?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, we are excited to begin a new round of Impact Through Education Awards for the 2020-2021 school year. We extend our thanks to The Equitable for its continued sponsorship of these awards, and to our partners at Concord Trophy for creating the plaques for the honorees each month. Tonight, we will recognize students and staff at Colton Webb STEM Elementary School and Northwest Cabarrus High School. We will work with the school's principals to ensure that each of our honorees receives their plaques. It is my pleasure to introduce you to our Impact Through Education Award recipients, beginning with Colton Webb STEM Elementary School. Our first honoree is Kristy Braxel. Kristy is a student who teachers love to see walk through the door of their classroom. She will work harder than anyone else in the room to better herself and complete all that is expected of her while at school. In addition, she encourages others to do the same. Kristy always has a smile on her face and shows grace to everyone. She is a model student throughout the building and her classroom, her encore classes, the cafeteria, and the playground. Other students look to her for guidance because she is consistently following rules and shows patience to all. Our second honoree from Colton Webb STEM Elementary is Nalani Patterson. Nalani comes into school every day with a smile on her face and ready to work hard. She completes every assignment with care, she shows great citizenship qualities, and is often seen inviting others so they feel included. She is a calming and trustworthy friend to those in need. During class tasks, she steps up and goes above and beyond, which benefits the entire class. Next is Ms. Jennifer Rinker. Ms. Rinker is the physical education teacher at Colton Webb STEM Elementary School. Her lessons are always engaging and promote healthy lifestyle practices among the entire student body. Ms. Rinker is a teacher leader, serving on many school-level committees, leading her professional development, her professional learning community, and organizing community partnerships that benefit Colton Webb students and their families. She is truly a valued member of the Colton Webb School community. And our final honoree for Colton Webb STEM Elementary School this evening is Ms. Nalida Nunez. Ms. Nunez is the data manager at Colton Webb STEM Elementary School. However, she does so much more outside of her job description for the entire school community. Ms. Nunez can regularly be seen helping the nurse with a sick student, translating messages for Spanish-speaking families, and overall going above and beyond to ensure all community members are welcome in the school's front office. She is a true master of many skills and always wears a welcoming smile. Congratulations to all of these outstanding individuals for receiving Impact Through Education Awards for Colton Webb STEM Elementary School. Now for our Impact Award Honorees for Northwest Cabarrus High School. Our first honoree is Nadia Hussein. Nadia is a senior in the NAF Academy of Health Sciences at Northwest Cabarrus High School. She is passionate about medicine, foreign language, and the arts. After high school, she plans to obtain a dual degree in applied linguistics and either human biology or neuroscience, and attend medical school. Nadia also plans to learn 10 languages in her lifetime. She's studied four formally and has picked up three more in her spare time. Nadia's passion for the arts is as strong as her passion for languages. She's completed several art projects for teachers and has had her work displayed in local art galleries. Nadia's many accomplishments include her selection to North Carolina Governor's School, as well as her time spent at the NAF Future Ready Lab Internship during the summer of 2019, where she helped design and print 3D products for people with mental and physical disabilities. Not only did she gain skills and experience from being in a professional environment, but she also helped improve another person's life in a small but tangible way. Next up for Northwest Cabarrus High School is Akshar Patel. Akshar is an exceptional student who truly embodies the tradition of excellence at Northwest Cabarrus High School. Currently a junior in the Academy of Health Sciences, Akshar plans to pursue a degree in biology and then attend medical school with the goal of one day becoming a cardiothoracic surgeon. Not only does he excel in the classroom, but he's also driven by a passion to help others and give back to his community. Akshar is an acquisitive and industrious student whose sense of humor makes him a favorite among his classmates. He possesses a maturity well beyond his years, and he responds enthusiastically to academic challenges. As a student, one of his proudest accomplishments was a research project where he predicted the path of a hurricane using a subsection of mathematics called vector physics. This work began in 2018 and has allowed Akshar the opportunity to present his research at the North Carolina Mathematics Fair, as well as many other conferences. Akshar has been recognized for his work at both the regional and state levels, and he has received awards from a variety of outside organizations. Our next honoree from Northwest Cabarrus High School is Ms. Andrea Rassler. Ms. Rassler began her professional journey as a teacher after earning a Bachelor of Science degree in English and Theater at St. Cloud State University in Minnesota. After two years in Minnesota, Andy and her family relocated to North Carolina where she first taught English and Theater in Charlotte before finding her dream job at Northwest Cabarrus High School in 1993. In the years since she became a Trojan, Ms. Rassler has helped to develop one of the preeminent theater arts programs in all of North Carolina. During her tenure at Northwest Cabarrus, she has been twice chosen by her colleagues as Teacher of the Year, and she has received numerous accolades and recognitions for her work with student groups at the NCTC One Act Play Festivals and the Blooming Awards. Additionally, her student ensembles have been invited to the NCTC Finals four times in the past four years. At all times, Ms. Rassler immerses herself in her classes, extracurricular activities, and interactions with her colleagues at Northwest Cabarrus High School. She uses collaborative and improvisational games in her daily classes, and she uses musical prompts to inspire original student works. Ms. Rassler is an ever-present member of the school improvement team, mentors students and new teachers alike, and promotes her students, her craft, and their activities throughout the school and surrounding community. In her spare time, which is almost never, Ms. Rassler acts, directs, and generally enjoys all community theater, and she has recently seen success in the playwriting world. Ms. Andy Rassler has bestowed confidence in generations of Northwest Cabarrus students, and countless lives have been changed for the better because she became a teacher. Northwest Cabarrus High School is eternally grateful for Andy Rassler. And our final honoree this evening is Ms. Elizabeth Brandenburg. Beth Brandenburg is a native New Yorker, a Rockaway girl who arrived in Concord from New Jersey 10 years ago. Ms. Brandenburg got her start in North Carolina schools as a secretary with the Student Services Department and Concord Middle School, where she was quickly promoted to Finance Secretary and remained until she joined Northwest Cabarrus High School in the same role five years ago. Colleagues describe her as empathetic, always willing to help, friendly, hardworking, and an expert in her craft. Collectively, the word amazing is used numerous times to describe Ms. Brandenburg, and it is absolutely on point. According to the Northwest Cabarrus Administrative Team, her attitude and concern are contagious and inspiring. Ms. Brandenburg is a tireless worker, exceptional colleague, certainly a rules follower, thank goodness, a stickler for detail, and an overall wonderful human being who makes Northwest Cabarrus High School a better place to work and learn. Congratulations to all of these Northwest Cabarrus High School honorees and to all of our Impact Through Education Award recipients this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Brandenburg, those are some amazing individuals, and thank you also for putting up their pictures so we could all see them. We go back to our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. Ms. Jones, are you on with us now?
I am, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, and everyone listening in on the live stream. We are kicking off the 11th school year of the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month Recognition Program. We are extremely grateful for such a longstanding partnership, and thank Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their continued support and generosity. We appreciate this opportunity to honor and celebrate outstanding teachers throughout our district. Now, it is my pleasure to present our first Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for the 2020-21 school year, Suzanne Sharon. Mrs. Sharon is a third-grade teacher at Charles E. Boger Elementary School. She was nominated for this award by a parent who wrote, "Mrs. Sharon has done an amazing job making her students feel comfortable and excited this new school year. Her love for teaching and for her students can be felt through the computer screen. We are a new family to Boger this year and have not yet stepped foot into the building. She has made us feel welcome, safe, and like we have always been a part of the school. We appreciate her so much and look forward to when our son can be in her classroom on campus. Mrs. Sharon, thank you for working to ensure that your students and families feel connected to you and to the school during this time of distance learning. Congratulations on your selection as our September Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month."
That's a very worthy nomination. Thank you, Ms. Jones. I guess we'll move on to 6.03, which is the Curriculum and Instruction Management Coordinator of the Year. And Mr. Parker, are you on with us?
I am, good evening, everybody. I've been really excited about doing this because I get to recognize one of my coworkers, so this is really a treat for me. Melanie Ritter's on the call, I hope Melanie can turn her camera on so you can actually get to see her this evening.
Welcome, Melanie.
Hey, Melanie. Just to tell you a little bit about what Melanie wants, she is the Southwest Region CIMC of the Year, and I am very fortunate at CTE that I have some very talented people in my department. I know a lot of you have met some of the people in my staff, and I think when you spend some time with them, you realize how talented they are. So just to recognize and tell you a few things about what Melanie's accomplished, she is, her title is actually Curriculum and Instructional Management Coordinator, and a big piece of what she does is she runs our professional development for our department. So all of the PLC processes that we have, the professional learning communities that we have in our department, she's the lead on all of that. So we have seven different program areas, so her plate's full trying to manage some of the workshops and things for seven different program areas. But that's a big piece of her job, but she's also trained as an instructional coach, which about three years ago, we started a model in our department of instructional coaching, and Melanie's the lead for that. So she's the one that's been helping all of our coordinators learn how to go into a classroom and be a coach. And because of that, and she's been so successful at it, she's been asked to present on instructional coaching at several state and regional meetings and conferences. So it's always nice when the DPI staff call me and ask if my team can present, and she's one of the ones that's always asked for. So I think it's a testament to her talent that she gets asked to present at state events. I do want to thank her for one thing, is she's taken on a project. We're trying to really create a grade 5 through 12 career continuum throughout our department so that students in grades 5 through 12 can learn about careers and have a really strong understanding of what's going to be going on in the job market. And she's really taken that on as a project, and we use a product called Naviance, and she is the project manager for that, and she's done a fantastic job with working with them as a vendor and creating the scope of work for all the students at every grade level, and she goes above and beyond in the department, and she does everything she does, she's fantastic. So I was really excited about this tonight because I really get to recognize a really nice person, and I don't think they could have been a better pick for the Southwest Region CIMC of the Year, so congratulations, Melanie, I'm proud of you.
Congratulations. Is there any, is there a next step to this one, or is it?
Well, they had, the next step was the state award at our state conference in July, and Melanie's one of the tops, but I don't think the state recognized her as the top like I recognize her as the top, so we'll try again next year.
You're the top with us.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, it was nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir.
So those are our recognitions for the evening. Moving on to Item Seven, which is Approval of Minutes. We had a couple minutes from last month. Have you had time to review those? We have two sets from the August 3rd meeting and our August 10th meeting. And once you've reviewed that, if there's any changes, please let us know, otherwise we needed a motion and a second to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Firdball.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harrison. Any further discussion on our minutes? Okay, all in favor of approval of the two minutes, sets of minutes from August 3rd and August 10th, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, those minutes pass. So we'll move on to Item Number Eight, which is Board Chair and Superintendent Comments, and mine will be brief, and again, it's just, thank you to all the staff that have worked so hard during these interesting times that we've been going through with the online learning. I mean, just an example for my son who struggles with the online learning, they have a team that have contacted us, the administrators, the MTSS coaches, the school psychologists, the counselors, the mentors, all the work to help him succeed. So that's appreciated, and I know it's not just my child, but they are looking for folks, the students that really are struggling, and they're reaching out to those individuals, and that's very appreciated by me, and I'm sure the rest of the board. Those are my comments for today, I'll pass that on to Chris Lauter for your superintendent.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
I had texted you yesterday, maybe, about just giving the totals from the Schools Tools Drive.
Thanks, thanks for that reminder, I should have, again, I've been out for all weekend.
Yeah.
So hold on, Chris, let's, let Cindy give us an update.
I just wanted to share that the WSSC Channel 9 School Tools Drive, which the Concord, apton, Sunset Rotary Club sponsors every year, collected 25,051 school supply items. We did collect just over 30,000 last year, but we were extremely pleased with the community's generosity this year, and we have actually held back some of the donated funds. We had actually about $1,600 donated, a lot which was used to buy headsets and earbuds. We had that money donated, and in conjunction with the school supply drive, the Rotary Club applied for a Rotary District grant, which we have been awarded, and that is to put supply holders in the guidance areas. We're hoping we can reach all high schools. The price of Plexiglas has gone up significantly since COVID, so we'll wait and see how many we can purchase, but I already mentioned to Dr. Lauter, he said facilities and management could install them, so we've held back several hundred dollars in order to buy the supplies to stock those supply holders. So one thing we did differently this year, we made supply bags that guidance counselors, other staff could hand out to kids if they were either doing home visits or they knew there was a particular need in any given family. So we wish we could do more than 25,000 items, but we're very happy with that. And lastly, I wanted to thank Mr. Walter and Mrs. Carpenter for giving up their time on multiple occasions to do everything from collections to deliveries and sorting and packing bags and whatnot, and thank Mrs. Grimsley and her husband for their donation to the drive as well. So that's all, thank you.
That's great news. Anybody else that I forgot to have an update? All right, now it's, pass it on to Chris Lauter.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do have a few things I want to highlight this evening. First of all, September is National School Attendance Awareness Month. School attendance is important now more than ever. Throughout the month, Cabarrus County Schools will raise awareness of the importance of school attendance through Present, Engaged, and Supported Campaign. The campaign emphasizes that strong trusting relationship between students, families, teachers, and other critical school staff has an impact on the ability of students to focus and learn, especially in this new environment. Additionally, establishing and maintaining regular communication with families and welcoming them as partners will help ensure that students are supported at home and in school. Our school social workers are working with school leaders to ensure that we're reaching out to students and families. The U.S. Department of Agriculture did extend the waiver that allows free meals to all children ages 1 through 18, so our school nutrition department is able to continue providing free meals to children in the community, and that is to students, even if they're not enrolled in Cabarrus County Schools, we can provide those meals. This extension does expire on December 31st, so we encourage families to make sure that they complete the application for free and reduced meals in case that is discontinued in December. Visit www.lunchapplication.com to complete that application and contact your, or contact your school for a paper copy. The school nutrition department also continues to add stops on our meal routes. You can find the most up-to-date information about those stops and times on the district website, select the Location for School Meals icon on the right side of the screen, or select School Nutrition from the Department tabs to pull that information up. I want to remind everyone that buses equipped with Wi-Fi hotspots are deployed throughout the community to provide internet access to students who need it. The buses are available 6:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. weekdays. For a list of those locations, as well as an interactive map of bus and other Wi-Fi access locations, you can visit the district website. Voluntary skill development sessions for athletics and performing arts began today with volleyball cross-country and swimming, and for swimming, those are just land workouts, and theater ensembles. If you guys will remember, those three sports are the first three that will come back and can have their official practices for the sports in November. Right now, these are just voluntary workouts, but it is bringing students back on campus with coaches voluntary on everyone's part. The phased-in two-week reentry plan will require students to go through numerous safety protocols before they can participate, and will continue to follow the guidelines set by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association and local, state, and federal health agencies to protect all of our students and staff. And last, we want to say a special thank you to the Touchdown Club for its generous donation to our high school athletic programs. We appreciate their support and are thankful for such a great partnership. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to thank Dr. Lauter for the information that came in. I was out of town this weekend, but I did get the email that showed the participation rate, I think, is that right, Chris, participation rate? So I just, the only question I had about it is, I'd like to know, and I just didn't have time to do a follow-up question, is that participation, or is that just where the child logs in? I don't know that that information showed the difference, or is it the same when they log in? Is it showing that they're participating, or, you know, I just thought about that when I saw it. And that was a great report, it sounds like there's a lot of areas, it's moving into reopening and reentry. I would like, since we had part of the discussion last week, for us to move towards Plan B as well. I heard Dr. Hill say very loudly that the staff would need three, four weeks to put details in place, you know, to move us towards that direction. I would like for us to put a definitive date to that, if we will, you know, such as the next nine weeks, or at least put something out there for parents and families to start preparing for that change. Just need to make that statement, and I know y'all are working on some criteria, and that's great, but I would like, since we don't have a meeting until October, if we need a special call meeting, or we're going to need that, I would like to have that because my schedule is very busy, and I'd like to be prepared for that, and also for the families and parents to know that out there as well, that we're moving into that direction.
Yes, so I can say a couple things about that. So we had a health call, just like we do every Monday, we have one on Thursday. The case count right now is the best that it's been in a while, so it is declining, which we want to see. The positivity rate pretty much stayed the same, I think when we met last time, it was 6.8, and it dropped to 6.6, so a little bit of a drop, but essentially kind of flat. But that usually comes out on Wednesday when they release that information, so that's obviously something we'll be looking at, because I think we said last time, the hospitalizations are still in very good shape in Cabarrus County. The case count is declining, so we were at somewhere, I think the first time we presented to you guys, we were at around 300 new cases a week. We were under 150 or right around 150, so that's half since the maximum, which is good. And then the positivity rate, as you guys know, was five, and then back up a little bit, so this week's positivity rate is something that we definitely will be watching close. As far as Plan B, that is one thing that we, I would say is an advantage that we have, is that we've been able to see what other districts have done and can change our plan for that. So for example, I'll just say that one of the things that has come out from all the other districts is that a lot less people are riding the bus, for example. So as you guys know, looks like, I think we told you last time we did a survey to kind of find out, surveys are, you know, only worth so much in the sense that people say what they think at that time, even though they might change their mind the next day, but they give you some information. Kannapolis right now has about 40% of their students that even if we go into Plan B, that will stay in Plan C, or in other words, they will stay all remote. That's a pretty common number across anywhere from 40 to 50%, and that was right at 40% is what our survey said of our parents. So if we were to move into Plan B tomorrow, it looks like 40% or so is a pretty good guess, will not be coming to school, they'll stay remote, obviously that could change, but it's a pretty good guess. And so because of that, one of the main reasons that we were looking at one day a week was because of transportation. So if transportation is in a different option, then we may be able to look at, you know, more days a week in Plan B, or other ways that we can tweak that. So we've been working on that for the last, really the last couple weeks, but certainly last week. Tomorrow, we have a principal meeting, that is basically the topic of the principal meeting, is to kind of take this information that we know now and work on tweaks to Plan B. We also know, for example, that when the state first came out, they said that all schools had to be positively less than 50% capacity, which is one of the reasons we went to thirds. Now they're kind of saying it can be at a half or a little bit more. In other words, they didn't want to say, well, if you're at 51%, you can't have school. So there's a little bit of tweaking, 51, 52%. So because of both of those things, we're kind of revamping Plan B to go over with our principals tomorrow, they'll go over the curriculum team, and by the end of the week, hopefully, certainly the beginning of next week at the latest, I think have some different options for Plan B that we would want to advertise as we bring people back. But regardless of, you know, if there are tweaks or not tweaks, whether or not we return is a different option, but I think, as I said, this week's primary goal is to see what tweaks we can make to Plan B, if any, and if they can, you know, be more inclusive. So again, that'll be hopefully by the end of the week, but certainly by the beginning of next week would be the latest where we can advertise what Plan B will look like, which I think would have, it would have some significant tweaks in that. So we'll be doing that this week. As far as the entry point, right now, what we've continued to do is to try to look at the positivity rate recommendations and look at cases, which two of those three right now are definitely looking good, and it would be nice if the positivity rate followed behind that, but we won't see that until Wednesday.
We have a lot of hands that just popped up here, based on the comments, David, and then Cindy.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter, for that update. In the revamping or the tweaking of Plan B, is there any scenario in which the county could go two days a week in school, or is Plan B, as it's being tweaked right now, still a one-day-a-week configuration?
Yeah, two weeks, two days a week is possible, that's one of the things we're looking at. Again, the transportation that has kind of come out to say that we know that if 40% of the kids aren't coming in, and then even among that 60% left, only half of those ride the bus, and that does seem to be a theme across most of the districts, that they weren't sure, you know, is that just a first-week thing? Do more people ride the bus in Week Two? the bus in Week Two, and Week Three, and Week Four? And so far, you know, four weeks in, this is Week Five, there's not a lot of difference. So that gives us some pretty good information about transportation. And so right now, we're not 100% sure we can pull that off, but more days a week is definitely on the table. We're looking at that right now. Yes, sir.
And so just to recap, that's a possibility that you're thinking about and planning as a possibility. Thank you so much.
Ms. Furtenbaum?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carolyn, Mrs. Carpenter, and I have been invited to the curriculum and instruction review of the tweaking of Plan B on Thursday. So I'm sure she's looking us forward to participating in that and see how some of the caveats that were in the original Plan B, as Dr. Lauter said, you know, between the buses and the size of classrooms and all that, how that will be managed now. So it won't be, obviously, completely school's normal, but I think that's a move in the right direction.
Thank you, Ms. Furtenbaum. Anything else for Dr. Lauter?
So I guess hearing all those encouraging statements, I really wanted us to, if we need to be more definitive, Dr. Lauter, so I heard all of that except for timeline. So are you thinking second nine weeks timeframe-wise?
So, you know, again, from the beginning, we've kind of looked at cases and positivity, but the second nine weeks is, I think someone said last week, and we kind of put it on the table, it certainly makes sense from a disruption point of view. Meaning like, so let's say you're in a high school biology class, it would make sense to say, well, the first nine weeks was in online instruction. And, you know, it wasn't that I did five weeks in this, and I had an A, and then we changed it in the middle, and I ended up with a C. It would at least make sense to say, grade one, you know, first quarter grade was under this environment, and so second quarter would work. Now, again, if we have massive cases and lots of positivity, then, you know, that's not a great thing. But it certainly makes sense. It's why several other districts said, well, let's just go the whole first nine weeks in remote, and then look at the second nine weeks. So the second nine weeks as a beginning certainly makes sense for a lot of reasons, if the, you know, the data looks good.
Sure. So that was my thought. We are in a decline in so many areas, and it is looking much better if we continue that route, and hopefully we will. I just think it's important to get that information out to parents as quickly as we can, because of the challenges they have with work schedules and what they've already had to endure with changes, so that we don't do that at the last minute or the ninth hour as well. So, Mr. Chairman, do you feel like that's something we need to call a special call meeting for to have that be prepared? Or what does the rest of the board think about that?
We're going to wait till Chris has his meeting on Wednesday? If there's a need to change, we're definitely going to call a meeting to do that.
Yeah, then we have meetings on Thursday, but the positivity rate usually comes out at the end of the day on Wednesday, has typically been when that comes out. We did, as I said, we did have a health meeting today. It was the, we track those from Monday to Monday, and then we also track them from Thursday to Thursday. We usually show you guys the Thursday to Thursday, just so it wouldn't be more confusing. I think Mr. Harrison actually asked for, you know, just give us one day. But it definitely has been the lowest Monday to Monday since we began this as far as cases. So that, you know, looks like a good thing. What I guess we don't know at this point, is there any kind of a spike from Labor Day? But as far as the case total, it definitely is, was a good total this morning.
Are all our board members available for next Monday?
I am for next Monday.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest, we had said that there would be, we would basically make a decision that we had two weeks of stability. By Monday, we won't have two weeks of stability. And then we would give two weeks' notice. Now, of course, if the target is October 23, the start of the second nine weeks, I think we still have several weeks to work on that. So I guess I'd like to see that we have the stability in the numbers, and we're not forcing a decision and then have to retract it. So.
Yeah, I don't want to be the last school district to stay online, if other ones are able and been successful with the hybrid models. Anyway, I do want to wait to see what the numbers are Thursday. That's an important part of it. But it's certainly encouraging that we can have a plan here that we can potentially go into the second nine weeks.
So how much notice do we have to give for a special call meeting?
Mindy, is it three days?
Brian, man, I think it's just 48 hours, isn't it?
It's 48 hours. It can do an emergency, but this would not be that much of an emergency. 48 hours of work, though.
So we will have the information on Thursday or Friday?
We've been getting it Thursday, right?
Yeah, we usually total that up. Mr. Schultz does that for us and totals all that up at the end of the day. He usually pulls it at midnight on Thursday, so you guys have the most current information. He usually sends that to you Friday morning.
So my thought is, if it's looking as good or better, that will be our second round of decline. That if we have the meeting scheduled already, I think there's no harm done. If it's a problem, we cancel it, and still no harm done.
Okay, I've got several hands popped up. Again, we've got Carolyn, and then David, and Barry. Carolyn, you're up. Your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm saying that, you know, again, we hear all this stuff on different numbers. Some people say, well, the 5%. I've heard it's not, you know, anything that that's changed. Well, I haven't heard it's changed. And, but again, we have seen a decrease in the numbers. I want it to be stable. I think it is good that if we can see ourselves start at this, you know, the second nine weeks, I think that would be good. We could shoot for that goal. But I think we do need to be stabilized. I think that's very important. So I think we could kind of aim for that. But I'm interested to see what comes from our meeting Thursday. You know, what we come up with, because the main thing we wanted to see is the children do not get less than what they have been getting, and that's what the CI meeting were wanting to see. That's had been their main gold. So I'm interested to see what we come up with. And I know a lot of the letters that I had received, a lot of the parents had said they did have a concern, because our original plan, they were not going to be getting as much face time as what originally. And that was one of the main objectives they were trying to, you know, overcome. And one of the things were to be getting more days, because one of the concerns they had, they didn't think it was worth the risk coming in just one day. So hopefully, we will be able to oversee that hurdle. Now, when we go-
Your meeting is when?
Hopefully, we'll be able to overcome that hurdle by maybe being able to come maybe more than one day.
So Carolyn, when is this curriculum meeting?
It's going to be Thursday.
It's Thursday, okay.
Yeah, Thursday, over in the afternoon. When we get to the next agenda item, I do have a question on that, too.
Okay, let's just try to get through this real quick, David. Real quick. But David, go ahead.
Just very quickly, I want to see what the data is, abide by our resolution, find the optimal date in the window for the, maybe a decision point, if you want to call it that, so that when the numbers are the most accurate, and we could then make the plans to go into the second nine weeks and make a decision one way or the other. I would like to know what that optimal date is with all those moving pieces. I want to be flexible, but I want to see what, again, what the numbers are, and be true to our original resolution. And at some point, Mr. Chairman, I just have a point of clarification about the idea of Plan A, but whenever you want to recognize me for that, I'll just wait till another moment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Schumaker?
Well, I am encouraged by the fact that it looks like we, the state has, again, changed the rules some, so we can allow more children into school, and that Plan B becomes a much more doable option. I'm going to say that I believe we should go ahead and schedule our meeting for next Monday. I agree with Ms. Grimsley, we should just go ahead and schedule it, not wait to the last minute and jump through hoops. Go ahead, since we know that there's a lot of detail that's going to come out this week, and then be prepared for Dr. Lauter to make us a recommendation on Monday, so we can see what Plan B looks like, and tell us what his thinking is. And then we can go ahead and make some decisions based on what he is presenting to us. So that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Dr. Lauter, is that doable? Would you be able to prepare to share with us what Plan B would look like?
Yeah, we'll send you, like we said, yes, for sure, that the, one of the last steps in what Dr. Hill is working on with the curriculum team is to present to that group that Ms. Furtenbaum and Ms. Carpenter are members of. So as we said, yeah, we can definitely present kind of the revamped B at the, if you guys call a meeting for Monday night.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter. Ms. Furtenbaum, you had your hand up as well?
Yes, I just want to share, I was just counting weeks here on my calendar, and it's five weeks from today that would be the end of the nine weeks. So if we get the presentation next Monday, or even the 28th, there would still be three weeks' notice. And I do agree with some of my colleagues that, you know, we had the original motion at 5% or less for two weeks is when we would consider the change. And we're not, we haven't been at 5% even once, I don't think.
I don't know if the motion covered the 5%.
What's that?
I don't know if the motion covered the 5%. Didn't the motion have declining numbers?
I thought it said declining numbers at or below 5% for two weeks.
I don't think that's our motion.
And then two weeks later.
I knew that was a discussion item. And I know that's what Chris-
Actually-
-Lauter is using for his recommendation.
Okay.
Let me interrupt, since I did the motion. The 5% came after the motion was made. That was when the CDC came out on that Friday and made those recommendations about hot zones. So we didn't have that information at the time I created the motion. And that was a later piece into the process.
All right. Well, it sounds like there's enough of us that want a meeting on Monday to at least discuss this and learn what Plan B is going to be about. So if we're all available next Monday at 6 o'clock, let's schedule a meeting that specifically addresses this issue. All right. Can we move on to our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, do you need a motion for that to amend the agenda to add that special call meeting? Or do we, can we just do that by consensus?
I think we could just go ahead by consensus instead of our meeting.
Sounds good to me.
So, Mr. Chair, I may be a little late for that meeting on Monday, but I'll do the best I can. I have a previous engagement that carries me right up to 6 o'clock, so I'll try to get in as quick as I can.
Okay. Thank you. David, go ahead with your last question, so we can move on.
And, Dr. Lauter, don't mean to put you on the spot, it deals with the idea of Plan A. I'm surprised that we continue to get emails from people who seem to believe that we can decide to go to a Plan A completely on our own. I don't mean to put you on the spot to explain the process of it, but my understanding is that decision can only be made by the governor. And just to clarify that point, again, stop me if I'm overstating, Cabarrus County Schools does not have the authority to go to a complete, back to school full-time, what we call Plan A, and that that decision is still, still resides with the governor of the state.
Yeah, I think where some of that comes from, and you guys know more about politics than I do sometimes when it comes to this, but I think the governor's, in other words, the governor said you're in B, and if, you know, a district can decide to go to C if the data matches up for that. I guess theoretically, you can defy the governor's order and say, we're going to go in A. I certainly would not recommend that we defy the governor's order. But there is a, you know, the governor could change that at any time. He could come out tomorrow and say that, you know, districts can go A, B, or C. Right now, what he says is B, and if a district decides to, go C. So I'm not aware that anybody is in A, but if they went into A, it would be a direct, you know, a direct disobeying of the governor's order. I guess the theory becomes, is that law, is it not? Is the legislature, all that kind of stuff. But at the end of the day, yeah, the governor's order does not permit A at this point.
Okay. Thank you all. Let's move on to our next item, which is item nine, which is guest speakers. And it's not quite guest speakers, but it is, our public has had an opportunity to send in comments to be read. Ms. Abbott, did we get any comments?
There was no comment submitted.
Okay. So we will move on to item number 10, which is the approval of the consent agenda. There were a number of items on there, and Ms. Carpenter said you had an issue with one of the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Last week, when we were asking for delegates, I thought that I got appointed as a delegate for our convention. And then I don't notice my name as a delegate.
I think you might be right, because I'm not sure I was going to be the delegate. So can we correct that?
That was the typo on my part. I'm very sorry for that. I'll go ahead and change it.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. So with that correction, are we still okay with the consent agenda? Or do you want to pull anything off? Or I would need a motion in a second?
That was my only question. With that, I would make a motion, with that correction, I would make a motion, this is Carolyn Carpenter, to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Carpenter, a second by Mr. Harrison, to approve the consent agenda with the one change that replaces myself with Carolyn Carpenter as a delegate for the NCSBA Annual Conference. Is that correct? All right, so let's vote for that. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes. And we're moving on to our one action item for today, is adopt the board, the budget resolution for the 2021 school year. And Ms. Klutz, are you on with us?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, Board. Last Tuesday, we presented the final budget for 2020, 2021. I believe we've been able to answer all questions and address all comments at this time. So I ask for your approval for the budget resolution for 2020-21.
Questions, comments before we vote for this, vote on our budget?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve, but I also just want to thank Ms. Klutz for this format, where we show last year's numbers, this year's numbers, and it gives us a good picture of how the budget is functioning year over year. So thank you for that. Thank you. I appreciate it, but I have to give Mr. Walter credit for that. He mentioned that several years ago, and we've been doing it. So I agree, it's a good report.
I appreciate that as well.
And I'll second Ms. Furtenbaum's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Furtenbaum, and a second by Mr. Schumaker to approve or adopt our budget resolution for 2020-2021. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. That motion passes. And that was our last action item. So the next one will be a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Make a motion, we adjourn. David, go to you first.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Schumaker to adjourn, second by Mr. Harrison, all in favor of adjournment. And just a reminder that we will be holding another meeting next Monday at 6 o'clock to discuss COVID-19, Option B, and that topic. So all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. That passes, and we are now in adjournment. We will see you all next week.
All right.
Buenas dias.